Would you ever old call please?
Mr. Jeter, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Compton, District 3.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District 5.
Here.
Mr. Hood, District 6.
Here.
Dr. Redwine at large.
Here.
We have new media with us today, is that right?
I was here last time.
Were you here last time?
I'm the last one.
All right, well, welcome to our nightmare here. We appreciate it.[34.22][34.22](Laughter). We don't like to serve alone, we like to have a lot of people here with us, so thank you. All right, we move to item four, the approval of the agenda as presented. Have a chance to look over that, for additions, changes, amendments to the agenda. I make a motion to approve. All right, we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Mann makes a motion, Mr. Herron seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item five is the presented minutes from our October 4 meeting, regular meeting that we had here. Have a chance to go through those, look at them, and any changes to those as presented. Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mann, I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Tipton makes a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, we move to item six in our agenda, which is citizens' expression period. It's a very important part of the meeting. We ask that if you are not here pertaining to an item that is farther down the agenda, and you wish to address the board, or the staff, or the county, you do so at this time. If you wish to speak, we ask that you come up to the podium and introduce yourself, give us your name, where you're from, and the county, or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but will take everything you say into account when we make our future decisions. We ask that you keep your comments concise, and businesslike, and polite if you can. If we have no one to sign up, that has signed up to speak, then we don't have a particular order. We just ask you to take turns and speak your business. Any action is to be taken regarding something that's mentioned in citizens' expression period would have to be taken after we close citizens' expression period. So, to my knowledge, we have no one who's signed up to speak today, so we just ask you to take turns and speak your business. So at this time, I'll open citizens' expression.
Maybe I'll have a report just a few minutes later.
All right. Anyone? All right, we will close citizens' expression period. We'll move to item seven, which is an advertised public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to create a regional industrial facilities authority pursuant to section 15.2-6400 of the Code of Virginia, which shall be known as the Lonesome Pine Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Anything, Ms. Kegley, you need to say before we start? All right. This is a new authority that's being organized, and we just, before we can participate, we need to have a public hearing, and it's been duly advertised, and so at this time, we will open the public hearing for anyone who wishes to comment on this topic. All right, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. All right, the... The ordinance has been included in your package, and we need to open the floor for any discussion about this particular authority, and at that point, after discussion, we can take action on whether to adopt the ordinance. So at this time, I'll open the floor for any discussion.
How many people going to be on this?
There will be ten total, too, from each locality.
From each county.
And you will choose those two.
Just individuals or first of all?
Individuals. They can be board members or individuals, they can, there's no specification.
It's non-paid positions, too, is it?
Yes.
It's what now?
Non-paid.
Okay. Or will they maybe choose different locations, or what? Does it set location?
It'll probably be at EVA wise at the beginning, I'm assuming. One of the members will serve a two-year term, and one will serve a four-year term, until those expire, and then everybody will be on a four-year. That's where they'll be staggered. So keep that in mind.
Any other questions? All right, open the floor for action on this ordinance.
I make a motion, we approve the ordinance as written.
All right. Mr. Compton makes a motion, we approve the ordinance as written to allow Scott County to authorize and participate in this industrial facilities authority. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mann seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will move to item eight. Mr. Sumter from Department of Transportation, and Mr. Christian here today, both of them, we welcome them here, and I think they have a presentation or a report for us, and then I'm sure they'll be welcoming any questions that the board or staff may have regarding VDOT. Welcome, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to be here with you. Just really don't have any formal report to give you, I just wanted to come here and just talk with you today, and Jackie's with me, and we will, we'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have for us. I guess first of all, I kind of wanted to just bring up, I'm aware of some concerns and discussions and things that you all had last month in the board meeting, and kind of give you the little summary of what's been going on with us here in the last little bit. As most of you all have been aware, by many of your constituents calling you and things, gravel roads have certainly been an issue. We've had that issue in all of our counties that have gravel roads during the past couple of months. It's, I'm sure, you know, everybody has, you know, something, you know, profession and things that they do, that sometimes it's hard, kind of hard to understand, you know, why things are being done a certain way, or what the issues may be. Well, for gravel roads for us, they, they're one of our most difficult things for us to try to maintain. It seems that we either have conditions that they are too dry, and makes them difficult for us, or we have them in the wintertime, they get too wet, and muddy, and soppy, and things try to make it difficult for us to maintain, too. Really ideally, for us to maintain them the way we like to, we need the road, we need the weather to be ideal weather. And I don't know about you all, but it don't seem like we ever get ideal weather anymore. So, we, we ran a period of time, and then against the kind of last month or so before the effects of the hurricane came up our way, that we had really dry conditions, and in really dry conditions, the roads will become washboardy, and they will become dusty. And we get into the situation there, that if we try to go and work the roads, put the motor graders on, and try to blade them, then we make them even more dustier than what they are. And, and then if we add gravel to them, then the, what we call the washboard effect will take an effect, too. Now, the opposite comes whenever it gets too much rain, what will happen is that they will become ruddy, they will, they will, they will get muddy, and we get a lot of complaints about that, people wanting them gravelled. So, we knew that we had all those conditions. First of all, let me go back to the dry conditions. We also had a lot of requests during that time that come in, that citizens want dust control, liquid calcium chloride, put on the entire roadway. And our policy is that we, we only put that in proximity of the houses. If we tried to put it on entire stretches of road, there wouldn't be enough quantity of calcium chloride that would fulfill our need, and that we even be able to get in, and get a handle on, or get that quantity in. So whenever the hurricane came in, we got some water that was able to loosen up, and so we had around six motor graders then that started working on, I guess it was the Tuesday after the hurricane came through Monday evening, I guess the holiday. And so we've worked those really hard, we feel like we've gotten kind of ahead of the problem right now, and kind of getting them back in shape. Before I go on about that, and I have other things, you have, do you have any questions or anything about that?
I guess, there's what, about 600 and some miles of roads, I guess, in Scott County, and then probably a lot of a third of that, maybe roughly, is going to be gravel roads.
I think, isn't it about 240 miles, I believe, is Jackie's, of gravel road?
Of gravel road.
In Scott County. Second most in state, from what I understand and know. And it's, it is, it's one of our most challenging things about Scott County is, and, and, you know, gravel roads, they just are very, they're very difficult to try to keep in ideal condition, as much as we would like to. And, you know, the mechanism that we have to try to maintain those is our maintenance budget. That's where we pull the money, put the gravel on, pay for the grading, and so forth. And the, the other thing that, that I guess, it's difficult for some people to know, because they're not there with us every day, and don't see, is that VDOT's based upon several little pots of money that we have. We have the maintenance money, we have, that's based in the residency, we have district money that's used for what they call state of good repair, that's where we do the paving, the things that you've seen, like on 224, on 23, that's, and that's based upon pavement scores, that's rated using some machinery that we come out and collect data with. And then we have the construction part of it, that we use, that we've done several of our unpaid road projects, the rural rustics, that we come to use, and that's a totally separate funding that we use to come to do that. Now, we all would like to see more money in every one of those pots. You know, we would love to have more money to do the gravel roads, to pave them. We've tried, we saw a bump in the funding here before last, and I want to brag on Jackie just a little bit, he's done a lot to try to get sections of roadway estimated and done in a manner, put into the plan, so that we can try and make some headway, but I know that there's not enough money there to do that. And unfortunately, we can't take the money that's used in, over in the maintenance, and use that to come over and pave the gravel roads. It just is not a, an ability to be able to do that. I'm sorry I get under, actually, I didn't, next part I was going to talk about, you, so I'm, I'm listening.
It's okay. You said you're not able to do that to move money, and I understand that from one pot to another. What keeps you from being able to do that? I mean, is it legislation, is it law?
Well, there is, there is legislation that's out there that, that sets all that up, but one of the things is, it's, everything's based on formulas. We receive so much money, like in the construction pot, the amount of money that you receive for the unpaid roads is based upon a funding formula that's set, that comes through the legislation that's set up for funding VDOT. The, the other side of it is that the funding for maintenance is set up, it comes, it comes kind of off the top, in order, you know, the, I guess the, kind of use an analogy is, is that, and I use, I always use the house with leaking roof to start with, is that if you have a house that's got a leaking roof, then your job is to patch that roof before you go over and build another house with, and put another roof on it, on a new house, you want to take care of that one first. And that's kind of the approach that VDOT has, has to that. And those funds are distributed, again, according to formula, traffic volumes, lots of different things that are, that come down at a broad scope, from, from, I guess, their central office, and through those formulas that come happen. We, we aren't specifically identified that, okay, well, each location is going to receive, like, they don't tell me that so much money is going to be primary money in the maintenance, and that is based upon, you know, traffic volumes, fun, the amount of the roadway we have, and so forth.
So central office would mean Richmond?
Yes.
All right.
But they're, they're acting in accordance with what provisions that there are in, in the code, and so forth, that, again, the code provides overall general, general guidance on maintaining, and then general information about how the funds are to be distributed.
So you have a formula to distribute the funds. Does, does every district in the state operate under the same formula?
Yes. And that's the thing, is that they're, they're based upon, these formulas go to these different funds, and they start coming down, and comes to the state, start with based upon revenue that comes in for, for roads, and then it comes down and split down to programs that go on in each district. Then it comes down to, like, for instance, on, on the paving, for paving now, our paving program is set up now that all the way down to our secondaries, our roads are evaluated, as I said, we have quite an elaborate type of computer type system, and sensors, and gauges that come out, and then they store the pavement. And so then, whenever they are, they are scored, those scores come in, they're evaluated, and in the cases of the districts, they're evaluated district-wide, and then funding is, is put down to the, on the pavement from that point. As example, again, and I'm sure, Dr. Redwine, you can start explaining to me how operate on a horse right now, and I, I would sit here and I'd have difficulty understanding, and I'm sure that I make it a little difficult here, but...
No, I understand, I, I think, I understand, and probably the board does, how, how your district operates with regards to spreading the money out. And, and no one blames you personally, it's not that we think you're making bad decisions. My, where I'm headed with this myself, is that I think you're operating under a set of guidelines that leaves southwest Virginia and Scott County at a disadvantage, because I think we have situations here with our roads that are completely unique, and probably unknown to the people in Richmond who are making the decisions. I don't see how you can take Fairfax County and use them as, under the same formula as used in Scott County, when they probably don't have one mile of unpaid secondary roads. And I just, you know, I, I understand how the decisions are made, and I understand how the money is, is distributed, I just feel like that painting the entire state with one brush, and treating Hampton Roads in Norfolk, and Fairfax County, and Lee County, and Scott County, and Dickinson with the coal mines in the mountains that they have, with the same formula, and expecting them to get the same results is just unrealistic. And the other thing I heard you say is that decisions are made based on traffic counts. And we know from political districts that a, a US congressman is, is assigned to a area based on population, and the ninth district goes from Cumberland Gap to Covington, Virginia, and Loudoun County has their own congressman. There's the same number of people in Loudoun County that drews from Covington, Virginia to Cumberland Gap, and I don't see, when you start doling out money for roads based on population and traffic count, when we have 300, 250 miles of unpaid roads, and they don't have any, it looks like the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. It's a hopeless situation for these people that are coming in here and talking to us about gravel roads.
I understand, and, you know, that is, again, a larger subject that's certainly beyond, beyond me, and, and what I can do. Again, I work within, based upon all that complex formulas and things that come down, try to do what we can with, you know, our resources to kind of give the best effect for us.
And I understand that, and we understand that, and we know that you have to do what you're allowed to do. My question to you is, if at the Bristol District, you had the ability, with the money that comes from Richmond, if we didn't ask for one dime more, if the Bristol District did not get one dime more money from Richmond than they're getting now, but you had the ability to use some of that money in some of these pots that you, that you're not so regulated on now, in other words, you could move a little of that money from primary maintenance to secondary construction, would that help you in providing a better use of the money in, in our area? Could, if that were in a fantasy world, if you were allowed to move that money around, could you do your job better?
Well, I mean, we could, address needs differently, as far as that goes, I'm not sure that I could say that, do it better, and the reason being is that, you know, my answer to you as a little residency administrator here in my residency, is that I don't have enough money in that other pot of money that I'm given, to do what I need to do on all those roads either.
All right.
You see what I'm saying? Is that...
Sure. We was talking about formulas a while ago.
Yes, sir.
And the construction formula is a little bit different than maintenance formula. Our construction formula is based on unpaid roads and the mileage of how many we have. This past year, in our six-year plan, Scott County was awarded $4.7 million in unpaid road money. Scott, Lee County was a little less than that, Wise and Dickinson County, they only received what we call a telefee money, which Scott County's telefee money this year, if we just received that, would have been $466,000. So what I'm saying is, by having all these extra unpaid roads, we got $4.2 more million in Scott County than what you would've got in Wise County or Dixon County based on unpaid roads.
Which allowed you to pave how many miles of road?
3.63 so far. Now, this is a six-year plan, this is the whole plan.
Sure.
For this year, 2018, it was $884,699. That compiled with the other money that was built up throughout the other plans, which, you know, you take a little off each year to spread each project, we built 3.63 miles of unpaid road this year in Scott County.
Which, which means in 80 years, we would have all of our roads paved.
Well, it's not where you'll ever see all of them.
Well, at the same, at the same rate, roughly.
But what I'm saying is, if we got the 466,000, which telefees, we wouldn't be doing anything.
I understand, and I know we're lucky to get what we get.
I just, I just wanted to make the point that they do have formulas.
Sure.
In construction, that with those formulas, we receive 4.2...
More than, more than others.
Than, than maybe Fairfax, or Wise County, or Dickinson County.
But you got to consider, too, Wise and Dixon has a lot less unpaid secondary roads.
Exactly, right.
Well, yeah, I get that call service tax helps them, too.
They don't have any, you know, hardly any unpaid.
Sure. But that call service tax kicks in for them, too, they've used it to pave the water on paper, that's how.
They have, in fact, it's not as good as it was, but...
Not as good as it once was, but there's still that, that's money we can't even, can't even touch, so they get that to cover their whole revenue.
But I just wanted to bring up the...
I understand, that we do get more than others.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I understand, I appreciate that.
And then the other thing about with the maintenance, yes, there is, it's somewhat different, that's formula, but it's still based on a lot of the same factors, but there's also an element of that with, with federal money that comes into it. We, like, 58 is an example, and Route 23, 19, those roads are, they receive federal funding, so we, we are monitored by the Federal Highway Administration to maintain those at a certain level. We also, our funding that comes down for maintenance goes toward bridges. Bridges have been an item that you've probably seen nationally, and bridges are evaluated and rated as, as well, and so, once a bridge reaches a certain level, then the federal government is watching to see how the funds that they provide us is going to toward repair of those as well as the pavements. So, a lot of different mixes come in to that. So, moving money's one to the other, it's kind of, in some ways, it's almost a rob Peter to pay Paul type thing. We could move money from, you know, from maintenance over to... We could move money from, you know, from maintenance over to gravel roads, but that also could mean that a primary road that's got five, ten thousand vehicles a day on it is going to have more potholes on it than the road that we paved that's got fifty to a hundred vehicles a day on it. So all those things go in. It's just not an easy thing to do, but we try to manage it as best as we can.
I understand, and I'm certainly just, I'm not a Department of Transportation expert, and I know you all understand your business a lot better than I do. And we're just country boys who are trying to use our.
I am too.
Brain, right. I'll say one last thing, and the reason, you know, we're getting here is, is the money that was spent on primary roads in the last three months in Scott County, Wadno Gap, twenty-three going to Duffield, seventy-two going to Fort Blackmore, and Fort Blackmore up to Rustic County Line. I'm sure you all have evaluated those roads and think that they need resurfacing.
They fell below our threshold on the scores that told us that in order to keep that road at a condition that is maintainable for that volume of traffic and the fact that to try to keep it in a condition that the road doesn't become worse and more expensive to repair, that it was time for us to repave those roads.
Well, you know, the people who are talking to us, and they don't, they don't know everything.
I understand that.
And, and I'm on Wadno Gap six or eight times a day. But they, they're of the opinion that all the money that was spent on those roads are part of the money, part of the money, even a fraction of the money was spent on those roads, if it was used to pave part of these secondary roads that we're getting all the complaints about that have no surface on them, that, that those primary roads would still be effective and still support the traffic, and somebody would get some roads paved.
I understand.
And I think probably the bigger question that, Mr. Chairman, will be the one on Wadno Gap that was paved. And I think next year you will come back and you're going to do a portion of that road again, so you're going to have a duplication of money.
There's a taking the curve out, which is a small section. And I realize that, you know, why would we do that little small section that's coming through there? Well, we're going to keep traffic on that section during the time of, with the construction. And the new road will be constructed mostly off that alignment and tying in and weighing the, the idea of the possibility of it becoming worse to maintain potholes and things like that coming until that project's done, then it's more advantageous to pave that little section at the time.
That project may also be delayed.
And you don't know.
Because of the wet procedure bridge.
Yes, that's, that's another thing too, is that we, we plan on all the projects taking place on time, but a lot of different factors could come in.
Right. Well, we thought the Wadno Gap project was going to be delayed until the twenty-three was finished.
That's, that is an issue that's still there.
Going to another topic, I guess, on the rural rustic roads. Jackie, I don't know if you have the numbers or not. Do you have a total miles of that list that you have, close to thirty or twenty-eight roads or whatever there are?
Yeah, right around thirty, I think, on the.
Total, total?
That are not on the list, is that what you're?
Right, thirty, okay, so how many total miles would that be on those rural rustic roads?
I really don't know.
It's on the waiting list you're talking about?
Yes. Have an idea of what the total number of mileage would be on?
I don't know. We, we basically keep the waiting list in your hands, so I don't know. Jackie may have it, but I don't know.
I can add that up.
Okay.
On your formula, like, the people that live like on a certain road or a certain stretch of road is like, is that part of the formula that you use, the number of people served?
The, well, me and everything kind of is a large scope and then it keeps coming down. The overall populations, like Dr. Redline's talking about, and those types of things come down like into a district level. And then the mileages come in, then they're given to us. And when we come to you for the, looking at what roads go into this six-year plan, then there has to be a minimum of fifty vehicles per day to qualify for it to be on the six-year plan. That's a.
I see what you're saying, that, you know, the fifty vehicles a day may be on a road that not have ten houses on it. And there may be another stretch of road that may be a mile or mile and a half, two miles long, that may have thirty or forty houses on it, and it may not get to that fifty vehicle a day.
I understand that that's the threshold that we use.
If people serve with people at greater value to the people that's on the stretch of road that would have more people on it than actual use of vehicle use. I'm like Dr. Redline, I wish we could change a little bit of that, it'd be at some part in it, where that we could, let's say that, yeah, we would be better served if we could pave this stretch of road here that had thirty or forty houses on it and leave the road off that had a little bit more traffic. Because some roads, like going up High Knob, in some portions of the, of the year, I know the High Knob Road coming from Hunter's Valley up is not paved, but the traffic volume on it may be a lot, you know?
As I understand, the fifty is set, but those types of decisions as to whether or not that road gets put on the six-year plan or another one, the decision is, say that they both are at fifty exactly, okay? And no road, no traffic on that type of road, basically, versus, or no homes versus what you're just describing, then we come to you when we update the six-year plan and add roads and seek your input and your decision on which one of those gets added to the plan. We try to use that common sense, like what you're saying, to try to, to add the roads that's going to see the most benefit. And I feel like we've been doing pretty good at that, working with you all on the local level. But again, the fifty threshold is there, but a lot of the roads that we're working to address, that's on the list, that's on the waiting list, are way above what the fifty vehicles a day is. So our question then comes back is that, if you consider what you're, you know, your saying is looking at scenarios, is it better to pave a half a mile on a road that's got two hundred vehicles a day on it? Or is it better to pave a road that's got fifty vehicles a day on it, and both of them have common conditions such as houses and that kind of thing? And, again, we try to work with you to make that best common sense approach based upon that threshold that we can and the funding that we have. And then the other thing that comes into play too is, you know, whether or not we can make the road safe when we make that improvement. Some roads, we can apply the rural rustic to because we've got enough width to be able to have two cars pass and do that safely, while other roads, they may have that, that traffic count, but we're going to have to take banks off, add fill, those types of things in order to, and probably to be more extensive. So, a lot of decisions that goes into that, and again, that's where we try to work with you to make the best decision possible.
Could you give us maybe just a brief update? And I know I've talked with Jackie, and you guys do, you know, a good job, and really appreciate that. And you mentioned that you're able to do more with the, you know, the rural rustic roads and get more, you know, pavement, you know, down. Can you give us some sort of an idea?
I'm gonna let him come to the podium there. He is the man that's working.
Oh, okay. He has the magic, huh?
Yes.
I went back and looked, Marshall, there's nineteen routes instead of thirty. There were thirty-four to begin with, now counting overall. We have ten routes on the existing plan, what we're working on now. And there's nineteen on the plan that you all have on.
I'm just trying to get at the total mileage, because we know we got two hundred and forty.
We was, we was at thirty-four a few years ago, and now we're down to nineteen. So, I mean, that list is going down some.
Okay. And at what point, and if you can address also, you're talking about the six-year plan. I know you'd made some mention in our discussion about, you know, like getting those number on this, what, thirty that you have now?
Right.
Down, or whatever that number is.
I'll just kind of give you an update of what we've completed. This, this year, we've completed Hunter's Valley Road, which is, brought those together, is one point four miles of total length. We've completed Sloantown Road, which was one point three-six miles. We completed, just finished Tuck Carriage Valley Road, Route seven oh four, which was zero point eight-seven mile. And that come up to three point six-three, I believe, I figured, that this year that we've completed on the dirt roads. And I would add that these estimates that we're, we come up with, but you all agree in doing rural rustic, which we passed a resolution, and that was great. We were able to finish these projects way under budget. And when I mean way under budget, some of these projects may have a hundred and some thousand dollars left on them. So what I'll be doing in the near future is getting in touch with Frida and say, Frida, I've got X amount of money left off of seven oh four. I've got X amount of money out of this. I would like to transfer that to the next project, to move rid of. That way I don't have to wait next year for another six-year plan. We're going to be able to add, get the construction going on another one. Ivy Valley down in Humonary will be our next project. It's, we're going to do, it'll be our winter project working down in there. And that was way over a mile long. Darrell and I went through there the other day, and it's real narrow, very narrow road through there, so it's still gravel. But, and then this one's quite a bit of interest, Big Ridge. What we're looking at will be one of the projects where we can transfer some of these funds to do Big Ridge as we come to it off the list. It's been a good year. We've saved a lot of money with our construction program, and hopefully we can continue. It's, it might not sound like much, but if I lived on Sloantown Road, it would sound good to me. And Fylde Creek and Browder's Chapel, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, speaking of Browder's Chapel, when's that?
It's complete.
It's complete already?
Yeah, it's complete. We just finished it.
I said, what, down the road across?
It's a nice road. I went through there the other day and was stopped twice, and it wasn't for dust this time, so. But we've got a lot going on, and we're trying to do this as economical as we can. And we're, we're really cutting some corners, but if we're done, we're having a good problem. Getting the people out of the dust is our goal. That's kind of what we're trying to do.
Can I mention to you about a rock situation? Have you been able to look at that?
Yeah, we have.
On Eden Hill?
We have. We've got contractors, we're going to have to get the environmental to look at it, but that should be, be able to take care of it this winter, hopefully.
Okay. I agree with you.
I'll ask you one quick question. During the dust of time, did, did they treat in front of the houses on most of the dirt roads?
They, we asked them to give us a report of what they treated. Most of them were treated one time and twice, you know, were they treated every week? Hopefully.
I traveled some, Cox Chapel, evaluation, they hadn't been in front of the houses. I was currently, I have to drive slow, not create a lot of dust, but I didn't see any treatment at all on those roads in front of the houses.
There's, there's one element of things that, you know, and I apologize, we're taking too much of your office time.
You're welcome.
And.
I wish you were here every month.
Well, the thing, we've gotten out of that habit of doing that. Our residencies are bigger now. We have, you know, four counties. We, I tell you what we will, we will try to do is, for the next few months, we will try coming every month, okay, and see what we can do here to, and then may ask you if we can come every other month, that kind of thing. Jackie or one of me will be here both every month for a few months, so we can maybe see if we can work on some of the things. I know you all have been under a lot of heat with things, and I'm sorry that that's happened. One thing that I wanted to mention is that, you know, we, we get a lot of perspective that's out there that, from, from folks, that, well, we get a lot of negative publicity, let's say that.
I believe it.
I had an employee work for me one time that joked, said that everybody's got a driver's license, that gives them a highway engineer's degree. And, and so, you know, we get a lot of what we should be doing and not doing and so forth, but honestly, I mean, we would love to do more. We would love to do things there. I grew up in a time my dad worked for VDOT and retired from VDOT, and he was an area headquarters superintendent. And in the areas like Patonsville and Fort Blackmore, there used to be like twenty-four to twenty-six VDOT employees work at those locations. And now there's like twelve. We supplement those with some contract employees. We've used hired equipment. We've had some budget reductions that we've even had to cut those crews back to be mainly top, construction type crews. So, we're trying to use the best effective resources. Sometimes, unfortunately, that means that trash bags on the side of the road aren't picked up as often, like every day or every Monday like what we used to, maybe there are a few days later. Sometimes that twelve people are dealing with some kind of major maintenance issue that comes up, and we have to pull those, and that means that we don't get to blade that gravel road that day. It, it really is challenging, and I know that we need in a lot of areas to be more efficient in other ways. We're always looking to try to be able to do that. When you're talking about, Danny, about the roads not being treated, like as an example, one issue that we had that was beyond our control is that, it seems like, you know, things always go bad when you don't need them to, is that the liquid calcium chloride contract for the state expired, and the new one didn't get put in place. We had no means of acquiring material there for about two months. And so, we were, we had to be very sparingly about what we used, and in some places we actually got down, we used it all. We, we tried to bring some in to Scott County from Wise County that we kept there for, like, that would be their use for snow. We tried to move resources and that kind of thing, but still even that was not there. And unfortunately, you know, that causes those types of issues, and I'm sorry that that happened.
One thing would help us then, if you could let us know, like here it's not available, material's not available, so we can help treat it on that call, whatever, that the material's not there, whatever, but it would help us, we knew that. It would help me tonight, when I drove those roads and I was wondering why they weren't treated in front of those houses. And then, so, I'm glad you all came today, so we could address this.
You know, certainly we've got, you know, we've got email access, one of the things that, that works well, like is, you can email Jackie, me, or Chris Bynton. Marshall works with him a lot, our maintenance manager, directly. Ask us to check on something if you need to. There is the eight hundred number that's out there for folks to use. That actually is a very good mechanism because that allows, it allows the issue to get on record. And when something comes up, then we can check back into our records and follow up with our folks and see where it stands. And then you can, I communicate, Jackie does with Frida a lot, so we let her know, and she can send issues to us as well. But we certainly are not trying to ignore the citizens of Scott County here and try to do a bad job. We're trying to, we're trying to make best use of our resources and our funding as best that we can and try to help everybody a little bit as we, as we get to it.
One thing I thought a lot about, you said something here one time, most people, everybody, the most important road to them is the road they drive on.
That's right.
And that resonated with me, because that's right, you know, it's the road that I use is the one that's most important to me personally, but the people in the county, they're the same way. The most important road to them is the road they're driving on. And so I appreciate you saying that, and I use it a lot in my own thinking of things because these people come in here, and it is important to them that they, that the roads take care of them. And I commend y'all for coming. Now, y'all have come. Now, y'all have come before, some are meetings, it took a lot of heat, and, you know, we try to be as, as, as good to you as we can, and try to understand where y'all coming from. It's very informative today, and thank you all for coming and doing it, it's been great.
I hope it's been, been helpful.
It has. One quick, a rumor. Did Russell County get forty miles of road paved in the last couple of years on unpaid roads?
I'm not sure if they did or not, but one thing that I know that, see, I was residency administrator there at one time. And one thing Russell County does a lot, and has, is they've used coal severance funds, and they've used, applied those with revenue sharing, and so they put a lot of, a lot of money toward that application and getting those funds come in to supplement what's given in the river construction funds. I don't know the exact budget, but if they have, then it's come through that type of funding.
I've heard that about it, I feel it was, how it was funded, or how it was funded.
I couldn't tell you the, the amount of roads that they have done, but I can tell you that I do know that they use that mechanism to supplement.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We, we appreciate the information and the explanations, and we understand that you are doing the best you can with what you're given and, and the guidelines under which you're given, given it to, have to operate under.
Well, you, you all work within, I'm sure every year when you have your budget meetings, you have the same challenges like we do, trying to figure out where to, you know, apply the money. Using the roof example again, is you feel sometimes that the roof's got lots of holes in it, and which one do you go and patch first? And so that's, that's kind of where we are, but, but we try to get to all of it as best we can.
Sometimes you have to be a buck.
Yeah, it's lucky down in city for a lot.
All right.
A question. Your website, out of my, you work out of my, that would be a lot, helpful if, if I could tell a resident on a certain road, I'm going to bring up an incident over at the slide in, down below Nicholsville, or in Taylortown. They, they, several residents called about, in between the times, that it was kind of like paved, but it was rough. And they was wondering if it was going to be left like that. I got a lot of calls from, from that, and it was several, a lot of them took a month and two months later that it came back and paved it. That information would be helpful if, is it on your website? I'd be more than glad to go on there and get it. Is just being able to tell the residents when they called, well, this is going to be done. And they're working somewhere else right now, but just as soon as they get done down there, we're going to come up here and pave a stretch of local road for a certain amount of space.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the means, well, I know it's not put it on his website there. But again, if you can just contact one of us, just say, hey, somebody's contacted me about this and has this concern, then Jackie, Chris, myself, we'll be, we'll be glad to try to address it for you.
I will appreciate it.
Okay.
I would just like to say, thank you to you and to Jackie and to Chris, you know, every time that I've dealt with you. You do a phenomenal job, so really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Keep you with you, and we'll, we'll come back next month if you have something nice for us, or, you know.
We're going to get you a reserved seat.
Okay, okay, that, I get a seat? Pretty good.
Yeah, I'm sure that when they find out y'all are going to be here, we'll need a reserved seat, so we appreciate y'all's...
Strike, please strike from the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. One thing I was trying to quick to do, if they're going to be here every month, if we could put them on place in the agenda to get them in, where are the other things to do? If we knew they're coming, to get them on the agenda, that way... In and out real quick, and that way, because they've got a lot of things to do, then if we know they're coming, just to put them on the agenda, like we did this time.
I think that's, I think that's fine. We could, you know, a lot of times, ninety percent of our citizens' expression period has to do with the VDOT issues. We could allow those people who want to talk to wait and talk during the VDOT section, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we could, I think we used to, years ago, when they were here, had them as the first item after citizens' expression period.
They were this time, except for the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, let them, let them just come on and knock all that out. Be done. If, you know, it's not, it's just, people who come in here are just frustrated. They want somebody to listen to them, and we've been able to listen, but we've not provided too many answers, because we didn't know. And these folks maybe can provide some of those answers. That sure would be nice if they would do that, and I think that's fine. We can, if you could make note of that.
Well, this time, we knew they were coming, they were on the agenda, we're going to come in, we could do that. If we know they're coming, it'd be good, making an agenda, I don't know, whether to get them in, get them out quick, because they got a lot going on, as big as the district they have, we're handling.
Sure.
Get them in, get them out.
And so, and that's, I don't think, the other people are less important than many other people do as well.
Well, people come in here, like I did in citizens' expression period, a lot of them maybe need to go to work or something, that gets them in and out pretty quick. They sit at the fair, they go a long time away, they get in, get out pretty quick, too, because they've got other things going on. They've been sitting there listening to us all day, and then they could be working or doing whatever, so. I, I commend them for coming, I really do, and it would seem it's great.
Be good for a state representative, as far as a delegate or somebody to be here to hear it too. He mentioned that they had twenty-six employees in the Fort Blackmore area, and now they have twelve. You take twelve state jobs or fourteen state jobs out of a place like Fort Blackmore, you're affecting everything, not just their ability to maintain roads. You're affecting houses being built, kids in the school, a huge part of the economy. When I grew up, you know, I had a lot of buddies, their dad worked for VDOT, and they lived in a nice house, raised a nice family, and contributed to the community. And that's a big effect of what the state has done to these local shops, a side effect to our campaigns.
I think one important thing I noticed about what Dr. Edwine said about the state trying to paint the whole state with one brush, and what, what may work in Loudoun County or Fairfax County will not work in Scott County. And so I think it's, that's a, that's a good way to put it, because we're all being looked at as the same, or not. We're totally different circumstances, what they have, so hopefully our state legislature, state people will listen to this, and realize you can't have, you know, one, you know, to paint the whole state in the same brush, you can't. It doesn't, doesn't make sense to do that.
The frustrating part, and I wanted to say that to him, and I've decided just to let it go, but ninety percent of the people who are making those decisions at the Richmond level have never been physically in Scott County, and have never driven on one mile of those roads. They have no idea what we're dealing with down here, and they're the ones providing their funds. And if, and we are, it's a disadvantage, whether you believe it or not, that we're six hours from Richmond, they can't come over here and look, but they just don't get down here, and they don't believe, and they're, and to them, and I understand, there's not enough of us to make a difference. You all seen it in, in the elections. If, if some of those people didn't get one vote in Scott County, it wouldn't matter, because there's just not enough of them.
Ninety percent of people in Virginia, they'll be used to the blue roads, they've broken Virginia's opposite road.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to get Richmond decisions to, you know, to reflect what goes on down here.
One thing that happened, it's been a few years ago, when Landon Noble was on the, on board, and we were at a VDOT, six-year plan meeting in Bruce. Secretary Lang was there, and, and Landon got a one-on-one with him, and I was there, too, talking about the unpaid roads we have here, and he was shocked. I don't think he knew that. And he couldn't believe we had that many unpaid roads, and, but he was the, in the position he's in, I know, you know, Virginia's a big, it's a big state, and it's long, you know, and it's hard to get out here. But he did not, he was shocked when Landon told him the number of miles that we have unpaid, and, so anyway, I don't think a lot of times they do realize what we're facing down here, I really don't.
Mr. Summerson?
Yes, I'm, I do apologize.
It's okay, we're still on VDOT issue, you're okay.
Oh, oh, I should have left, I figured you were trying to...
Those are all good.
I do apologize. There's something I needed to bring before you, and ask for a little bit of help and support. Talking about those pots of money that we have, one of the pots of money that we have is a program called H-SIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's a, it's a funding that comes through federal funds. We go out, we identify areas that have high volumes of traffic, safety needs and so forth, that we can look to improve, get, apply for a federal grant, and then if we are approved for that, then we take that money and make the improvements. These are usually small-scale projects that we're talking about. One of the projects that's being identified in our reviews of projects that might qualify for that is along the Gate City Bypass. If you, it's a very, in some ways, a subtle type of project that we're talking about, that you, people wouldn't really notice, but in the median area, if you travel through there, there are drop inlets. There are about fifteen drop inlets that are in the middle, and if you notice, you look down, and they look like they're set, road's setting in a hole. If you ever travel through, they have the drop inlets set down, and, and so it makes it, you know, an area of concern. Car runs over into the median, boom, go right down in a hole. So we have a project that's being proposed to go in and put risers, as we call them, raise those up more level with the median. It still flow, and then the project also would consist of adding inside rubble strips to the area around the Gate City Bypass, and also a guardrail extension down at the end as you're going to the farther exit. And our project designers have asked me to see if feel that it would be a good thing, helping in the application, if we could get the board to pass something, or get Frida to write a letter or something that means in support of us applying for that project. And the project is about five hundred thousand dollars is what kind of funding that we're looking for. If we're successful in that, usually the project will be done within like two years of, when the funding is received. This is the same type of money that we applied for and received to do the two-twenty-four curve. It is an H-SIP project as well.
All right. H-SIP, Highway Safety...
Route twenty-three bypasses.
Route twenty-three bypasses. You'd like a letter of support in there?
Letter of motion passed by the board in support, is whatever y'all feel is appropriate.
You're going to have to apply, like with an application?
Yes, we would like to include that, which...
Let's go with a letter of support if the board doesn't have an objection to that. All right, Ian, discussion? I need a motion to that effect.
So moves.
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter makes a motion. Mr. Tipton seconds, that we write a letter of support, have staff write that for this grant, for VDOT to apply to the Highway Safety Grant, to make about, make, I'm not even going to say where, in Scott County.
Safety improvements on twenty-three around Gate City Bypass.
All right. Motion to that effect is made and seconded on favor of Senator Fife saying aye. Aye, both. All right.
I get with, with her, too. I've got some more details for you that I knew, that helped you on that locations and so forth. I'll send that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ian, sorry.
No problem. All right, we want to move to item nine. Lisa Bealhars, how am I doing? Is that close?
Close.
You can straighten me out. Jennifer Fraser, I got that one down. And, but please feel free, and my apologies if I mispronounced, and you can introduce yourselves. Here from Boys and Girls Club for an update today, and the school system.
That's right.
Slash school systems.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of Scott County Schools and the Boys and Girls Club of Scott County, we would like to thank you, and we appreciate your support and commitment for three years to the Scott County Boys and Girls Program. I would like to pass out a brochure with some information, and Lisa's going to give you an overview of the program.
All right, thank you.
I also just want to say thank you. Without your initial support, we probably would not have been able to start the Scott County Club, and we're really excited we were able to open up on June fifth, which was our anticipated date. And we started at Schumaker, and we moved to Weber City Elementary for the fall program. And we currently have one hundred and seventy-eight members, and we are averaging about seventy young people every day. We've had as high as eighty-eight many, many days, and we've had, last night, I think we were at about forty-five, but we anticipated that with Turk or Trudy, of course, they all wanted to get home and get dressed. But we're really excited about the program. We're actually a little concerned, a good concern, is that I think we're going to outgrow the site that we're currently in, so I think we're going to have to start looking for space. And we get requests every day to start taking older teens or take teens. We serve right now, we, we started originally, we're going six to twelve-year-olds, but we're actually up to fourteen-year-olds, because we allowed young people, when they came into the program, which was twelve, some of them are thirteen now. We, we had one thirteen-year-old sneak in, and now they're fourteen, so we let them stay. And so we, we settled along, but the kids would grow with the program. And our ultimate goal is just like at all of our other sites, that we go from six to eighteen, or six through high school. We have no intention of putting a child out or a young person out if they are still in high school. So that's growing, and we're very excited about the program. But with your support, we were able to open, and we were able to secure a matching fund through Cigna, which gave us twelve thousand dollars, and, and your support helped us secure that. So again, we want to say thank you for that. And we're just very excited about going into the two thousand and eighteen year. We just wanted to come and give you an update. We were able to provide programs in all our five core program areas, as we talked about. We've served with the one hundred and seventy-eight members. We consistently see, even though we average seventy a day, we have consistently seen ninety-three of those come on a fairly regular basis. So, you know, we average about seventy percent, or, I'm sorry, seventy-eight percent of those kids come three or more times a week. So the majority are coming, you know, regularly. It's not just once or twice a week. They're coming more often, which is very pleasing to us. That's what we wanted to be able to see. And this summer, we didn't think we were going to be able to take any filter trips, but we were able to include the Scott County members on our annual trip to the K-Mets game. Took over two hundred young people to that game. If any of you would ever like to volunteer, please let us know. We always need extra chaperones. It's always a fun trip. And then we also took young people, we have a leadership program, and threw some funds through Speedway Children's Charities. They included Scott County this year, and we have a program called I'm Still Me, and ten of our young people from Scott County got to be included on that trip, and we chose Grove, or, I'm sorry, Coke Ridge, that natural, natural tunnel state park. I apologize, that's the first time I got to go up there myself. So we took an overnight trip there, and that was a lot of fun, and the kids really enjoyed that. And so we got to do some workshops and had some folks come in for that. And I just wanted to give you a chance, if you had any questions to ask, to, to give you an opportunity to ask us any questions.
Questions, comments?
Sounds like you're doing a good job.
Your weekly program, your daily program, begins soon schools out and goes to win.
Seven P.M. And then when we're on full days, we go from eight to four. So like Monday, the sixth, we'll be open eight to four, but on the seventh, of course, we'll be closed, because it's voting day. That's probably, if we have a complaint towards us, not towards you all, towards us, is that parents wish we could be able to open a little bit longer. But with the eight hours, that's what we budgeted for staff, that's all we can afford at this moment. We're trying to figure out, hoping that we, going into the summer of two thousand and eighteen, that we might be able to stretch those hours just a little bit to accommodate more families attending.
Well, I know that it's a big help to people who either one parent families who work, or two parent families who both work, to have, know that these kids are having a good, are in a good program, and they're being taught something, and they're being supervised, and they know where they are. and they know where they are. You know, I know there was certainly times when children who are way too young to be alone are going home, getting off the bus and have nobody there for them, so good program for them.
We've scholarshiped, I think thirty members we've scholarshiped in. So they, we do provide scholarships for the families that aren't able to afford it. Nobody's turned away.
Fantastic. All right, any other questions, comments?
Thank you all good.
Thank you. It's good to know that budget money is being spent in a good place.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we can move to item ten. Amy Bond with Library here today for an update from Scott County Public Library. Or maybe Lunt's Pine Regional Library.
Well, a little bit of both.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share information about Scott County Library. I'm here with Susan Gibson and she's the branch manager here in Gate City of the library. Jennifer Mead, who is one of your library board members, sends her apology. She, she is principal at the Fort Blackmore Primary in Dungdan and Intermediate Schools. And they are having an onsite federal cafeteria review visit this morning, which she's going to be tied up to about noon. So she gives her apologies that she couldn't come. And then your other trustee, Donna Carter, you may not be aware, she has resigned. So we have a vacancy that we are looking forward to you filling in the coming months.
A burden on the right, Amy.
A burden on the right.
Go forward. Yes.
You knew I was going to press the middle one. The library here in Gate City has over seventy-four thousand items in the building for loan to people who walk into the library. There's sixty-eight thousand books, there are thirty-three hundred DVDs, and those are movies and documentaries. Fifteen hundred audio books. Audio books are very popular, especially with people who, delivery drivers, people who work out of trucks in their cars or people with long commutes. They serve a good need for those people. We have thirteen hundred music CDs. And the library subscribes to forty-nine magazines and six newspapers. And these are basically the traditional library materials that everyone is familiar with. But the beauty of being an original system that, is that the people who use the library here in Gate City have access to four hundred and ninety-four thousand items through a shared catalog. We have nine libraries in the system. Everything that's owned is in that catalog and people request those. And they can request items from home, they can come in the library and request them. But it is, it is actually the most popular service our libraries have. And they place holds for things they want. And we have a courier driver that comes two times a week to Gate City and delivers the material. So usually if a library patron sees a book they want and they, they sit at home, they put it on hold, it's at the library within two business days. Oops. The slide's skewed a little bit, but anyway. Last, during the last fiscal year, we had forty-one thousand visitors to the library in Gate City. And they checked out sixty thousand library materials. And you may not be aware of this, but we also have a mailbox library for residents who are unable to come to the library, whether they be elderly or, or have, sometimes people break their legs or whatever and they can't drive to the library. But here in Scott County, there were nine hundred mailbox library checkouts. And we basically, they, they can do that online, they can request materials or they send in a postcard. And we mail out a catalog. So we served nine hundred checkouts in Scott County last year. And then we had sixty-eight hundred computer sessions. We have eight public access computers that connected to the internet. Not, they also have word processing software, Microsoft Office. We also have a tremendous amount of resources available on internet for people and these are very well used. We, most of these resources are purchased by the State Library and make those available for us. We, and through our State Library affiliation, we have over eighty thousand downloadable eBooks, audio books, magazines and streaming videos. We have three eBook services, Overdrive for reading and One Click Digital. And we have Zenia Magazine Service. We have a genealogy database, Heritage Quest Online. And it has not only like local history books and Civil War records, but it is greatly used for, it has all of the census records for the United States. And then we have a number of databases provided by the State Library. And these are for school-aged children, preschool children, and there are things for adults too. And it's all, most of it's under Find a Virginia, another resource is Ebsco Host. We have National Geographic Kids, Kids Info Bits, and we have Credo and Homework Help. And I just wanted to mention Credo because it is like an encyclopedia for school-aged children. And we provide that. Funding for these resources was taken away from the public schools in the last couple of years. So we provide these resources to the schools as well as, you know, just to juvenile library patrons. And it's all based on where you live. And if you log into these resources from Scott County, the software knows you're in our system and gives you access. Homework Help is, is very, very well used. It is, in fact, Lunt's Pine Regional is the biggest user of Homework Help in the state. And through Homework Help, there are state certified teachers that come online between certain hours of the day. And children or can, can log in and say, I need help with my homework. And they are one-on-one with a state certified teacher. And then another thing we have, and this is a local initiative that is funded through the State Library, is we are digitizing school yearbooks. And we have a growing collection of yearbooks that have been donated, they're digitized. And you can go on our website and view them. And because of copyright law, we can only digitize yearbooks prior to nineteen seventy-eight. But right now, we have a number available from Gate City High, Ryecove and Twin Springs. And those are always fun to look at. The other services we offer are photocopying, printing and fax services. And we kind of have evolved as a place to go to for just individuals who need to copy something, print something or send it back. And we do that at very low cost to the individual. We have a state-of-the-art microfilm scanner printer. It's only one of two in a region that is high-end. And that is used for mostly genealogy research or for people. Sometimes people want to look up old dictionaries. So it is used to search or digitize newspapers. We have wireless and wired internet access. And our internet access, we are fortunate, eighty percent of that is funded through the federal ERAC program. So we, we have that at very low cost. And that's tied into the same ERAC funding that your public schools receive. We provide internet access to citizens and increasingly, people have to apply for jobs online. They have, there's tax filing online, they have, there's a number of e-government services that are only offered online. There are some employers that have remote workers and they have to go online and submit their time shifts. So we provide assistance to people for that and also with email. And as I mentioned, we help people with, we have our Homework Help and our School Project Help. And we also do test proctoring. And that is a service that a lot of colleges will, if students are getting their college degrees online, they have to have their tests proctored and they come to the library to do that. And we provide that service free of charge. And now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Susan and she's going to talk a little bit about what's going on locally.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'll talk to you just a second about some of our programs and our staff that we have at the library. This is our current staff. We have seven employees, two of which are full-time, myself and our children's programmer. The rest are in varying degrees of part-time. And the full-time equivalent to this is four point five employees. Over this past year, we've had two hundred total programs with four thousand total attendance to those programs. Our first program is our little guys, the Mother Goose. They're for children under the age of two. We read them a book, they sing songs and they develop interactive play with each other. Right now, we have five children enrolled in this group and they meet on Fridays. The next one is our toddler time. They are for two-year-olds. We read a book to them, they sing songs, they make crafts. And they learn fine motor and social skills during this program. We have eleven children currently enrolled in this program. They meet on Mondays and Wednesdays mornings. Our next group is the story timers. They are the three to five-year-olds. This class helps the children prepare for kindergarten. It's more of a classroom structured class, more so than the other two were. They read books, they sing songs, and they play educational games, learn the alphabet, things of that nature. We currently have fifteen children enrolled in this program. And they meet on Mondays, Wednesdays and Friday mornings. Next is our after-school program. These children meet on Tuesday afternoons and they are for grades K through seven. They read and discuss books, play educational games, make crafts. Lots of times just generally unwind from the school day, somewhere to go that's nice after school. We have fourteen children in this program right now. And this is our summer reading program. This is a six-week program that runs from June through July. We have multiple types of entertainment with this program. We have musicians, ventriloquists, storytellers, plays, musicians, all with a focus on reading. And so we have prizes at the end of the program for the top readers in each age group. We have such a high turnout for this program that we have to borrow Schumaker Elementary's gym just to accommodate them all. Library won't hold them. This past summer, we had a hundred and twenty-six kids in our summer program. We also offer adult programs. We have an adult coloring book class, a beginner's crochet class and a book club. These programs meet once a month. And we also have the occasional movie night and nail art class. And the library also hosts special events. We were honored to be chosen this past summer to participate in the Crooked Roads Mountain of Music Homecoming Festival. We were on their venue and we showcased the Carter family. We showed a movie on the family, their music. And we also had a small museum of items unloaned from the Carter Fault. Along with the special events, we have author talks and book signings where the authors actually come to the library and we'll meet and greet with patrons. We're actually having one later on this month. And our final group is the Friends of the Library group. This is just a group of citizens that come together and who want to promote the library, support it, help improve it any way they can. They're not affiliated with the library, they've just decided that they just would like to help. They do this by fundraising for the library. They do volunteer work occasionally at the library. And they're real good about helping to promote public awareness to our events and our, our special events that we have. Right now, we have nine active members in our friends group. So that, that sums up our, our program. I'll turn it back over to Amy.
Okay, in closing, I just want to thank you for your support. It's, it's been stable in Scott County, which we really appreciate. And that has kept, for every dollar you appropriate, the state matches that with forty cents per dollar. So that has kept our state funding stable here, which is why Scott County has a state-of-the-art microfilm machine. And they have, you know, they have the computers and equipment and, you know, a good book and library materials budget. So I do want to thank you for your support and we'd be glad to answer any questions or if you have any comments, I'd be interested in hearing what you feel about the library and how we can better serve county needs.
I have one question. The preschool, like the Mother Goose up through five-years-old, how do you, how do you advertise that? How do people out in our county find out that that program's going on and that these small children can be enrolled in that?
It is advertised on our website. Do you send out any other?
We put out flyers and we notify the local Head Starts. A lot of the children we get for these programs are the ones that didn't qualify for Head Start or weren't able to get into preschool this year or, you know, an extenuating circumstance like that. So we let, we let the schools know that that is an option for them to use.
Now, you know, I just thought a lot of these two and three-year-olds and the very small kids who might yet got involved in school or Head Start or any of those programs, you know, I'm sure that that's something that they might be interested in. So, well, any way we can ever help as far as just mentioning it during our meetings or get it out into the county so people realize that it's going on. I'm sure it would help enrollment and probably help all these people too. So that would be a fantastic addition, just to, you know, try to make sure that all the people in the county realize that it's available. But we appreciate everything you do and looks like you guys are providing a lot of service for a lot of people. I'm a little bit blown away by the numbers. You know, the number of people that are in and out there in a calendar year and the number of people who... and the number of people who...